The Board of Trustees' regular meeting is now called to order at 4:31 PM. We welcome members of the public instructions and making public comment are posted in item one on the agenda. We will ask each item if there is public comment. Armando, can you please do roll call?
Yes, Chair Olson. Student trustee Dizon?
Here.
Trustee Baker?
Here.
Trustee Dodd?
Here.
Trustee Kishneff?
Here.
Trustee Iverson?
Here.
Trustee Dunna?
Present.
Trustee Rios?
Here.
Trustee Olson?
Here.
Vice President Reeves, can you please do the pledge of allegiance in honor of your birthday? As we gather today, it is important to acknowledge that Napa Valley College and surrounding Napa Valley sit on the unceded traditional ancestral and contemporary homelands of the Miwak, Tatwin, which are comprised of three federally recognized tribes: the Kushele Dehi Band of Winton Indians of the Kalusa Indian Community, the Kutzle Dehi Band of Winton Indians, and the Yotche Dehi Winton Nation, and Wapo, including the Michoacan Wapo, also known as the Onasachi Peoples. As part of Napa Valley College's mission of transforming lives through excellent educational and professional opportunities that are student-centered, equity-focused, and community-oriented, and in accordance with the college's values of accountability, integrity, inclusion, respect, social justice, and sustainability, we make this acknowledgement. We also affirm that this acknowledgement is insufficient. It does not undo the harm that has been and continues to be perpetrated against indigenous people, land, and water. May we hold steady in our commitment to be in solidarity and in action to seek equity and justice with the Miwak, Tatwin, and Wapo peoples. Item 2.4 adopted from the agenda, trustee Kishneff would like to pull item 8.16. Correct?
Yes, please.
Are there any other changes to the agenda? If there are no objections, the agenda is adopted, made consensus, as amended. Is that correct? Moving on to constituent group reports. First report associated with students, Dr. Powell? No. Classified Senate, Michelle?
Chair Olson, Michelle has a written report that is included in the agenda.
Okay, great. Thank you. Classified Association, Kira?
Good afternoon. My name is Kira Sullivan, and I am grateful, as always, to be given the opportunity to speak here today. For several of you, this will not be the first time you've heard me speak today, so thank you in advance for your continued attention. I had some fiery words for Dr. Powell this morning, but the truth is that even when I, as a representative of the union, put the pressure on, Dr. Powell and I are colleagues. And we have an obligation to each other to work collectively for the betterment of the college. So I would like to address the board. As... To the board, your obligation as elected officials is to the community of Napa. You have an obligation to the taxpayers whose property taxes make up the majority of our district's funding. Many of those taxpayers are also college employees, but that's a shrinking number as low wages force workers into commuter cities nearby and outside of Napa. You have an obligation to the growing number of NVUSD high school students whose participation in dual enrollment has offered a lifeline to shrinking departments. You have an obligation to the students in our various nursing, technician, EMT, and firefighter training programs, and an obligation to the hospitals and community organizations they serve, both as students and as graduates. When the board refuses to approve a contract that addresses the needs of NBC staff, you are failing those taxpayers, students, and community organizations. When staff are underpaid, overworked, and under-resourced, student services take a hit. When it takes five months for the business office to pay peer support worker stipends, participation in the program drops and future students no longer benefit from peer counseling. When it requires a slew of emails, calendar invites, and follow-up things on Teams just to get information or approvals that we need, time that could be spent on direct student services is wasted. When we are unable to recruit for vacancies due to low wages, classified are expected to work around the hole that goes unfilled. Essential functions invariably fall into that hole and therefore impact students' access to a safe and supportive learning environment. On your way into campus, depending on when you arrived, you may have noticed our faculty and classified colleagues conducting an informational ticket by the River Trail Village bus stop. They're not in the room standing with me today because we no longer have faith that we are heard when we speak in this room. So, after a year and a half of bargaining, we have decided to bring our struggle to the public's attention, and we believe that your constituents deserve to know how you have performed in your elected capacity. Now, I imagine everyone in this room is already aware that the classified union's recent strike authorization vote passed overwhelmingly with 96% yes votes. The union does not want to strike. But without a real commitment by the district to improve the terms of our working conditions, we will be forced to move forward with a work stoppage. In that case, the board's inaction will once again cause direct harm to our students and our community. At this time, I urge you to reconsider your stance and act decisively to preserve the public image of Napa Valley College and the well-being of its students and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Kira. Christine? Don't...
Madam Chair, Christine Tapi also submitted a written report, and it's on the agenda.
Okay. How about Matthew Kronzer?
Unfortunately, I don't see Dr. Kronzer in the room.
Okay, John?
Thank you so much. I just made it. I'm so sorry about that. We were out by the bus stop with our classified colleagues, letting the public know that we're here. So, thank you so much to the board for your service. I want to welcome you all back for our fall semester. We're very excited to get back in the classroom with our students and, you know, continue building this amazing institution with our classified colleagues and all of our wonderful students here. But thank you so much for your service, and speaking on behalf of the faculty here at NBC, we value your dedication always to service to our community and this college as a core aspect of that community. We do value that. And speaking of value, I want to use that idea of value as a theme for my report today. A day that's at the beginning of another wonderful academic year with a fantastic group of new and returning students. And unfortunately, another day, the 417th day, in fact, of working under an expired contract. As a reminder, working under an expired contract means we have not improved working conditions to show that we value our endlessly dedicated educators, benefits to take care of their families, and compensation to meet escalating cost of living demands. Anyway, value. Value is a complex idea. One philosopher I discuss with my students sees shared value as the foundation for growth of any society, as it serves as the starting point for conversation and reasoning. I hope I don't have to say to everyone here and in the NBC community that we all have a group of shared values tied to our students and their experience that really guide us forward into the future. However, the faculty at NBC also greatly value ourselves, our expertise, and the passionate vigor with which we build classrooms and other learning spaces for our students. We value that deeply, but that value is not mutually exclusive from the shared values I mentioned previously. I believe there could be a misunderstanding that faculty value ourselves above and over any shared values associated with our positions here at NBC, when in fact, those values converge together as we navigate our careers here. We value ourselves because we value the students and their experience and want to trust ourselves to foster that experience. Those two ideas become inextricable from one another. Now, there is a feeling of lack of, of a lack of value that we expressed to Dr. Powell this morning. The process of this negotiation cycle has been hard. It's, has been frustrating to see the district demonstrate at times a lack of value for our role at NBC. It has been disappointing to see progress of negotiations or efforts to be acknowledged and heard in our concern seem to fall flat. There have been moments of optimism, and we hope that there are more of those in the near future, but for the most part, it has been the former. So, I'm going to bring this home with two ideas related to value. One specific and one more general. For the general, we would like the board to consider shared value while they receive updates from the district bargaining team and Dr. Powell as we hopefully get closer to a solution to this problem. We want to solve this problem. We are motivated to come to an agreement with the district as soon as possible. However, the motivation is driven by, most importantly, by our value in ourselves that is tied up in our value of the students and success of the institution. And we hope that the board understands that. For the specific, I wanted to say something brief about the recent windfall of one-time funds that the district received. We are so happy as a faculty that NBC has this new financial flexibility, and we know that the decision as to how to spend that money will go through a process that involves the input of all constituent groups. That said, we do not, we do want the board to know that what you do with that money will go a long way to indicating the values you hold and where you place those values in our institution. We hope you keep this in mind while deliberating. And as a final note, I want to acknowledge that we stand with our classified colleagues strongly, and we acknowledge their recent strike authorization vote, and that this college really does not run without them. And I want everyone to know that. Thank you, as always, for this opportunity, and the faculty's position is and always will be that we are unified in our rights as NBC faculty, ready for the challenges of the future, thankful for the lessons of the past, and passionately dedicated to the success of our students and the institution as a whole. Thank you so much.
Thank you, John. Do we have an associated students' report? Classified Senate? Yeah, okay. You didn't have a verbal report you wanted to share? Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you for doing that and for being here. At this time, the board will devote a total of up to 15 minutes to hear comments regarding closed session agenda items. Individual comments will be limited to three minutes. Is there probably a comment, Armando?
There is, Madam Chair. The first request to speak is from Mo Kashmiri.
Okay.
Hi, board members. My name is Mo Kashmiri. Can you hear me? All right. So, I'm the SEIU labor rep. In negotiations for about a year and a half now, and we're at a crossroads tonight. For the first time in history, at NBC, the classified staff has taken a 96% strike vote authorization, which authorizes the bargaining team to call a strike if necessary. Both units are out of contract for the first time that I can remember. And in the past, we used to be able to work things out. I think the story at NBC was, we're a family, we sit down, and we worked it out together. And if there was problems, we worked it out behind the scenes, and we didn't air our dirty laundry. The crossroads tonight is, we're either going to, you're going to decide in the closed session shortly whether we continue to work along a collaborative path or whether we move down an adversarial path. We will hope for collaborative. All the staff are asking for is their fair share. For the staff, it's a slap in the face when Jim Reeves can get an increase in his salary to $21,000 a month and people who don't even make a living wage have to go get second jobs and go to food banks to get through? Is that the kind of district we want? I just want to remind this district one thing. We've never had a strike at NBC. I've been through a lot of strikes, and I can tell you one thing, it changes the culture forever. There will, right now, our employees feel like NBC doesn't care about us and isn't willing to give us our fair share. What we're seeing is that the district has $5.6 million of new funds that they identified last meeting that he talked about. They were $3 million under on construction. We know that when the audited actuals come out, it's going to show that we have more money than we expected. And all we're asking for is our fair share. But when a strike happens, it can never be taken back. Who cross the line, there are friendships that are torn forever. There's not, this is not the place we want to be. We're asking you to please work with us and help us come up with a fair deal. We understand that in the past, there were budget problems. That's why from 150 staff, we now only have 125. There's been cuts that have been made on our side. People have taken off the extra work. We're counting on you. Give us a deal that's fair and don't push us into a corner where we have no other options. Because that's not the kind of district we used to be, and it's not the kind of district we want to be. This is our last chance. We're like, we're running out of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mom.
Madam Chair, we do have a second request to speak from Dwayne Almeida.
Hello, Dwayne. We're not able to join. This is so...
Oh, okay.
Just photo, Dwayne Almeida are joining us live from the corner outside of River Trail Village. I realize it's small, but if you can hear what they're saying. You can see we have a number of our colleagues out there. We're glad to have them join us virtually and just give you guys an additional opportunity to hear their voices. They are asking, as we have asked before, for a contract, fair one, and we want it now. So, thank you guys again for your time, for joining us.
Thank you. Any other comment cards?
Madam Chair, that was the final request to speak.
Okay. At this time, the board will move into closed session covering conference with labor negotiators and public employee performance evaluation, and we will return at 6:15. Taking a little longer tonight. We are returning from public session. There was no reportable action from closed session, so we're moving on to general public comment. This public comment opportunity is governed by the California Brown Act. By definition, this is an opportunity to hear concerns, perspectives, and differing vantage points. The board is not able, under the Brown Act, to engage in any level of conversation or discussion, but we look forward to this opportunity to gather community input. At this time, the board will devote up to 15 minutes to review comments to the Board of Trustees regarding any subject not appearing as an agenda item for this meeting but over which the board has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will occur at this time on such items. Each comment shall last no longer than three minutes. Armando, is there a public comment?
Madam Chair, there's no public comment at this time.
Thank you. Moving on to action item approval of consent calendar. Is there a public comment?
No public comment, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion with approval? Trustee Baker made a motion.
Second.
Trustee Rios seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now, we are looking at consent item 8.16, which we pulled from the agenda.
Chair, can I make a motion maybe just to continue the item and move on with the rest of our meeting? We'll continue out to either next meeting or...
Table it.
Yeah, another meeting in the future.
All right. Do we need a second for that?
Oh, second.
Trustee Dodd made a motion, trustee Iverson seconded. All those in favor? I mean, sorry, trustee Kishneff. Any opposed? Motion passes. We are tabling item 8.16 to a future meeting. Moving on to action item 10.1, EEO Annual Certification Report. Charo? Should I move to the next? Okay. Let's move, let's skip ahead. We'll come back to that item to information item 13.1, 2024 to 2025 Unrestricted General Fund 11. Vice President Reeves?
Thank you, President Olson. I'll call your attention to the schedule. The Fund 11 report. Armando, can you find that? Can we pull that up? Thank you. Report is pretty thin at this point because on the far right column, we're just into the first month of the fiscal year. So you can see that we received 3% of our revenues thus far, and you can also see that we've spent 5% of our salaries. And so, again, it's pretty thin. You can see the big, big numbers at the bottom. We spent some money in advertising and printing at 29%. So our total expenditures are 5% of our budget. I would add, if I can call your attention to column D, the pre-audit, recognize that this is our fiscal year end '25, ending June 30. This is still in progress in terms of closing out that year, but today, it's looking, it's looking fairly positive. It's hard to say at this point exactly where we're land, but I, I think we'll be able to maintain our, our minimal reserves, and we may be able to contribute a nickel or two there. Recall that this is inflated, I would say artificially inflated, by two matters. One is the receipt of $6.6 million from the IRS and COVID recovery funds. And secondly, the fact that we did not spend the funds set aside for compensation to our two bargaining groups. So, those numbers will be reflected in our financials, but I want to caution us that we should not think of those as reserves because they are technically committed, excuse me, the CBA numbers or the collective bargaining numbers are committed funds at this point. And as the board requested at the last meeting, they have asked the, the college to come back with a plan to manage the $6.6 million IRS funds. I'll share with you that we are developing some proposals that we will introduce to the district budget committee. We've made that, we've made that information available to everyone. So that, that will be considered at the meeting. I think it's scheduled in about a week. So, we'll be able to provide some, some recommendations to Dr. Powell and ultimately to the Board of Trustees. So, that would conclude my report unless there are other questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Vice President Reeves. We are going to go back to action item 10.1, EEO Annual Certification Report. Charo?
Good evening, Board of Trustees. Tonight, I present to you our annual EEO certification form. This form is a representation of our progress from the last two years to the current year. Additionally, it shows the number of incidents, allegations that have been investigated, and also how we have used our EEO funds. Things that I'd like to point out from this certification, the form has been changed this year than last year when I presented to you. This year, we are required to showcase our successes and our challenges. Some of our successes is our continued ability to provide training. We actually updated our training to include more equity focus and also clarity in our processes. Some of our challenges, however, continues to be with our ability, with our current technology for reporting, limited staffing to keep track of the data, and also to implement any changes. However, with our EEOEC, we still continue to strive to meet and strategize to make improvements in our process. We are seeing significant increases in our applicant pools, and we do see changes in the right direction for our employment base. The, the application, the annual certification form is quite lengthy. However, I hope that you all had an opportunity to review. This is something that is required every single year now and must come to you for review and approval. And at this time, I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions? Is there a public comment?
Madam Chair, there's no public comment at this time.
May I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Information, wasn't it?
Was it?
No, it's action, 10.1.
There's an information on the type.
There's action on my pinout.
Supposed to say that is a clerical error, and I will humbly ask for your forgiveness. I will update that right now. I can do that live.
My motion stands.
My drop.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Charo. Do we take a vote? Wait, it is a cler, which is a clerical? I thought you meant my notes. No, this is a clerical. It is an action item.
It is.
Okay, so trustee Rios made the motion, trustee Iverson seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I thought...
The chair's notes are always right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good to know.
Is that the same as I'm always right? The chair is always right? Okay, good. Yeah, right? Okay, let's move back down to item 13.2, action item Music Festival Agreement. Vice President Reeves?
Thank you again. We present to you for your consideration an agreement to enter into a contract with STR Entertainment, also known as Blue Note, to offer music events on our football field beginning next year for three years. The college has been working on this for several weeks and has been, has engaged college staff and facilities and our athletic director, our police department, et cetera, in, in working through the questions raised by the college and the promoter in an effort to come to an agreement with a mutually beneficial agreement for these music festivals. We have been working diligently with college council. I would also want to recognize and thank trustee Rios and trustee Dodd for the critical review they gave to this agreement. I think they're probably tired of looking at it, but I thank them personally for the time they spent here. We would like to present this for your consideration, and I think, thank you, Armando. Can you, this is an overview of the agreement. Apologies extended. I asked that the, that the principal with Blue Note come and provide an overview of this. They are traveling, unfortunately, and so I'm providing you this. I'd also suggest, I suggested to them that they, they would likely get an invite to our September meeting to answer any questions or provide an overview of the initiative moving forward. So, I'd be happy to pull up the, all of the fine print in the contract, but let me give you an overview. Go back to that first slide, please. The terms and conditions, they will be executed after the board reviews and approves them, and it will go from now and through the end of 28, December 28. There are no events scheduled for this year on campus. It would begin next year. There are no events scheduled for this year on campus. It would begin next year. The site access period, April fifteenth to November seventh, typically for each of those three years. April fifteenth would just allow them to set up. I modeled that they would do ten events during the course of that one period. They could do more, but I wanted to model. They say they will do more. I wanted to model more conservatively. I'll get to that in a moment. And they would break down likely at the end of October at their final presentation. The use periods is selected weekends, May through October. It's a music festival approach where they would have acts typically on a Friday or Saturday or Sunday night. The campus areas impacted generally the football field and parking areas. And I'm going to ask Armando to pull up exhibit A when we get to that point to show you how that layout looks. The NBC staff impact, we're very sensitive to this and wanted to push off as much of this, hopefully all of it to the producer. We anticipate some contact with our facility staff and orientation and the logistics of the setup, our police services to monitor their, to approve their safety plan. Administer and administrative staff. We do anticipate the need to hire a full time person to do several events on campus, but to focus on this so that we get off on a strong start. And I have utilized some funds in that pro forma to determine to support that need. The agreement also provides an opportunity for NBC to approve proposed acts. So if they're proposing an act that may may not be acceptable to this community, then we have the right to to not accept that particular act. And we have a period of time in which we can review and and accept or reject that. Next slide, please. The benefits of Napa Valley College. The venue introduces attendees to the college that may not be familiar with us. They are indicating that their participation rates could be from twenty five hundred to five thousand in a particular event. So there is an opportunity to introduce or reintroduce a public to Napa Valley College. The promoter will provide short term student worker opportunities. This is important to us for obvious reasons. And I would also add that it provides opportunities for students who are in our residential program to also work through the summer and before late spring and early fall semesters. Productions add to student life, student life experience at NBC, including students in the residential program. The agreement provides thirty complimentary tickets per show that can be provided to students and staff. The venue provides an opportunity for college use in addition to other organizational use. I think that was an important matter we talked about probably two years ago. This venue can can be attractive to another use that the college feels as though could be beneficial to them and to the college and to the community. So I think that's an important feature of this agreement. This initiative provides additional unrestricted revenues to the college, estimating at between three hundred K and six hundred K per year based on the number of events held annually and the attendance at those particular events. I modeled this at ten events per season. We were asking for, we asked for a significant increase in their starting point for parking. And we're also going to receive a piece of the concession, excuse me, concessions, concessions, thank you, in addition to ticket prices. So we think it's fair. I always like to think there's more to get here, but I think we're at the point now where I think we need to experience a little bit before we go back there. I would also ask, add that there is a review period after each season that we can, we will go back and say, this is, this is performing differently than we anticipated or we agreed to. And we can make adjustments. And I anticipate perhaps we can make adjustments in some of the financials as well. Next slide is, any questions at this point?
Why is the, there's such a huge variance, three hundred thousand to six hundred thousand? I mean, I know with music events, you never know, but don't we know what they're making right now?
We know what they tell us they're making.
Yeah.
And I prefer to be, it could be better than this. If they, if they had ten events at five thousand, then the number goes well over six hundred thousand dollars. But if they have an average of, say, three thousand, then the numbers will slide between three and three and five hundred thousand. I've, this is a little bit, from my perspective, we don't have experience here. I think this number is conservative, but it's a bit, it's a bit of a guess for how effective this venue will be for their attraction. It is very attractive to them because we have parking.
Yeah.
And we have space. So I think, you know, they haven't backed away from this. I think it's very attractive to them and I think they'll be able to to attract a crowd, let's say, with the right acts. But I think it's a little bit of wait and see, honestly.
Would we have any say in what the ticket prices are? Right now, what I've noticed is that the Latino acts are almost twice as much as the other acts that they're having, the ticket prices. So, and that drinks are a little bit more expensive, too.
Yeah, the reference to ticket prices is really about what the college will yield on a particular rate of tickets. So something at thirty dollars. We receive two hundred, two dollars and ninety cents per ticket and at over sixty dollars. So there's not a reference to, we can make decisions about their ticket sales.
But we just get percentage of the sale price.
Yes. And that's a, frankly, that's an area that we likely will want to negotiate moving forward, depending on what the performance, real numbers look like. Armando, would you mind pulling up exhibit A, please? This is generally the layout of the venue. You'll notice this is the athletic fields. And in particular, the impact is at the football field. I think we will also, we have some use there now, as some of our board members know. So we clearly need to give them ample notice that that, that we need to either shift them to another space or they need to find another space. There is some outbuildings. And remember the timeframe here, it's end of April they begin, or mid April they begin. And they're out by October. I've spoken with our A D. I think his concern now is where we place the lines on that soccer field to make sure that, you know, it all works. So as we begin to set up, we reserve the right to shift some of these outbuildings, particularly to make sure that our programmatic needs are met in addition to being able to meet their needs as well. These are the stage setup and some more detail about some outbuildings. We've identified some pedestrian accesses areas from the parking spaces to the venue.
May I have a quick question?
Please.
I can remember in the not too distant past when we had a particularly wet year where this entire field was underwater. Is there a concern about that? I mean, this would be in the dry season. But, yeah. Yeah. So is there?
They don't seem to be concerned about that based on when they want to do this, but they take the risk if it's not available.
Then it's on them.
It's on them. That's correct.
I have a question. The there seems to be like a lot of capacity for these events. And so just asking for those complimentary tickets, is there no way to consider like having more available for the student body or maybe like discounted rates for the tickets? Is that something that you'd be able to negotiate for for students?
Justin, I think we'd want to work with you to determine how many we can get to students based on the acts as well. There may be acts more appealing to students than other acts. So I think we'd certainly want to consult with ASNBC and others to determine how we can get those tickets to, to an audience who will appreciate them.
Are there going to be troubles scheduling sporting events?
That's because of the time of year, I think the critical time is probably going to be September, October. And the placement of the field, the placement of the outbuildings is the part that I think is is going to be the challenge. Baseball is a spring sport. So they may leak into, into, into May. However, the baseball field isn't directly impacted. Soccer is the one that, that I think we have to be really careful of. But as Jerry Dunlap shared with me, we just need to confirm that where we place the lines for the soccer field are adjusted based on where these outbuildings are. So it'll be tight out there for that period of time, particularly the early fall semester. But we think we can, I think the folks on the ground think they can manage that. I'll share with you, the big concern frankly is, is safety, security and traffic management. And Chief Wade has been very very helpful in identifying those issues and she'll be part of approving the safety plan moving forward.
I'm excited about the project. I know you guys put a lot of time and energy into it and it's nice to see outside public private partnerships for the college for additional revenue sources on the road. So with that, I'll move for approval.
Can I, can I suggest that the board consider that the agreement is substantially complete? I think there may be a little, a few tweaks that, that Blue Note couldn't weigh in on. I think it's there, but I would, if I can request that you consider it substantially complete and when completed, that the president has the authorization to sign off on that.
I amend my motion to approve on a substantially complete contract.
And keeping in mind
Again.
Student trustee, these are comments too in terms of maybe just another piece, I think. As you mentioned, just I think, to the extent, maybe there isn't, a concert isn't sold out, but there's a hundred tickets available. Like, it would be great if our students could have access to that. So that opportunity, which perhaps hopefully wouldn't make a difference to them. Yeah, and I just, just a comment, I just wanted to say thank you, Jim, to you for the time and effort you've dedicated this and the facilities team. It's a lot, a lot of work with everything else that you have on your plate. I think we all know here that there's a certain pot of money that we have for the college to operate on a, on a annual basis and that is really not going to grow at all. Or certainly not very significantly. And so I think the opportunity here in terms of this additional revenue that you've worked hard to get to this college, to bring to this district, to support our students is a big deal. It's a really, really big deal when every dollar counts. So I just, I wanted to say thank you for that, that time and effort in making sure that this is, I think, a fair deal. I think it's both fair for the Blue Note team, for Mr. Tesler, but it's also a fair deal for the college just economically alone. But I think the additional benefits that you mentioned in your presentation, you know, in terms of student opportunities, opportunities for our students with respect to working, just being around for students at River Trail Village, just to be around a concert, like those are probably going to be able to see the show just on top of the hill for the kids and not being able to avoid having to pay for a ticket, I suspect, depending on how high those fences are. And, you know, with the River Trail Village, how high it is, I just probably suspect you're going to be able to see the stage from up there as well. So and just having more life, bringing more people on the campus, exposing more people to the campus so they get to know the district, they feel comfortable if they haven't been here before. And to, you know, return as a student or for another event in the future. Yeah, just, I see a lot of significant benefits in addition to, I think, the most benefit to the college, the most significant benefit to the college is the, you know, the increased revenue for our students. So thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Dodd, was that a second?
Second.
Thank you. Trustee Dodd seconded. Is there a public comment?
I have to say, I, as a member of the public, I'm looking forward to a concert that I can walk to.
Oh, nice. Yes.
I'm sure there are no other public comments at this time.
Thank you, Armando. Is there any discussion, any other discussion? Comments?
Could I add one comment? If any of these events are, say, broadcasted, maybe if there's a way to get the event broadcasted to something like River Trail Village, if it's right there for them and to avoiding the potential inconvenience for them to have to try and secure a ticket for themselves, just because it is part of their campus, if there was a way to get it broadcasted, then that potentially.
duly noted. Thanks, Justin, and we'll bring that up.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Vice President Reeves. Action item fourteen point one, Board Policies. This is the second reading. Is there a public comment?
But I'm sure there's no public comment on this item.
You have approval? All right. Trustee Baker made a motion. Trustee Iverson seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. President and Board Reports. Trustee Deluna, do you have anything from the C C T board you'd like to share? Okay. We are going to be meeting soon, hopefully for audit and finance.
Madam Chair, do you want to hear that we skipped over fifteen point one, the President Cabinet Reports?
Oh, okay, there we go. Sorry. Let's go back to that. All right.
Good evening, everyone. You may know that today was our first day of flex where we welcome back everyone for the fall semester. And we had some wonderful sessions. We want to invite you to attend any of the sessions tomorrow. And I've just highlighted a couple of them here. So at nine o'clock, we're going to have a session on AI and education, updates and open lab. At ten forty, we'll have an opportunity to tour the Wine Education Center. And it looks so beautiful. It's really lovely. And at twelve forty five, we're going to have a session on discipline research. These are just three of the more than thirty workshops that have been organized by a team from the Faculty Professional Development Committee and the Staff Development Committee. So it really is a shared effort to make sure that we have good professional development opportunities for all of our members. So we are leading up to the start of the fall semester, which begins on Monday, August twenty fifth. We have a lot of activity right now in terms of registration. There are always students who would like to come and they may start coming the Thursday before classes begin or the Friday before classes begin and also in the first week. So we do have about half of our classes have one or more seats remaining. So there is opportunity. Also, for any students who might not have recognized that our start date is August twenty fifth, we have some late start classes. We have about eight sections of late start. And those begin either September second or mid October for our second eight weeks series. And just a reminder, I had talked about at our June board meeting about these two icons that appear on our class schedule. So the one on the left represents zero textbook cost textbooks. And the one on the right represents low textbook costs. That is defined as forty dollars or less. So that's a helpful tool for students who are trying to select classes where they will have less of a financial expense. And finally, I wanted to update you on the two grants that we applied for, and I shared details about them at our last board meeting. So we heard back from the Chancellor's Office regarding the Industry Driven Regional Collaborative Grant. While our application was passed, they did not have sufficient funding to fund all of the applications. So we have taken the most possible component of that grant, which was to have Napa Green certification for our vineyard and identified that as a goal for the coming year. We don't have the capacity to do all of the elements of the grant, but we are moving forward with that piece. And then finally, the Education Title Five HSI Grant that we applied for, it is likely that we will not hear about the status of that and status of other things as well until September or early October. So we'll be sure to update you then. Thank you very much.
Dr. Mara, quick question. And you may not know this off the top of your head, but if you do, what's the percentage of the courses that we offer that get one of these icons?
It is about, it's close to fifty. It's getting close to fifty, yeah.
Okay. Good evening, Board of Trustees and Community. Wanted to start off today, just sharing some, some difficult news. I'm sure you, you've already heard. President Powell has informed you of our SSS Trio Program and the closure of it effective August 31st, 2025. This is due to the Department of Education not renewing this five-year grant with the college. Despite this news though, I want to assure you that we are committed to serving, proactively taking steps to respond to the needs of students. So Dean Ramon Salceda and his team are taking the hands-on approach and really specifically intentionally reaching out to students, holding space for them as a, they, for meaningful closure and ensuring that they connect to other vital services on campus like EOPS, DSPS, MESSS STEM and our learning communities. Through warm handoffs, streamlined referrals, personalized outreach from staff, students will be guided directly to the support they need. It's important and critical that we hold our students through this time of transition. Our students will not fall through the cracks. We've established some clear communication channels to keep our students informed about their next steps. And we remain determined to sustain empowering culturally responsive support and care through this time of transition for SSS Trio students. Want to, want to shift over and speak about a program that we received. Very excited about having Rising Scholars Program in Napa Valley College. You may have heard about this. But the, the college did receive a grant over the next three years for $327,342 from the California Community College Chancellor's Office. This is a statewide initiative designed to create very specific pathways to provide support for students who are justice impacted, helping them to overcome barriers and to achieve their educational goals. As a vital component of California's efforts to ensure all students, regardless of background, have the opportunity to succeed in college and beyond. So again, as I mentioned, this is going to be set over the next three years. This will be administered by Dean Jessica Erickson, her staff, specifically aligned with the work and initiatives like EOPS and, and specific spaces like that. The goal is to make meaningful impacts for our justice impacted, our most marginalized students on campus. So this ensures that we continue to take the, the critical steps towards supporting educational equity for, for all students on campus. Very exciting that we're able to start this program. Want to give a quick update on River Trail Village. This past Saturday, August 16th, we did a, a welcome to around a hundred students, brand new students who have come into the college. And we're very excited to, to welcome them over a full day of, of moving in. So we anticipate more students will continue to move in through, throughout the beginning of semester, over the next several weeks. As of Tuesday, August 19th, these numbers actually have crept up a little bit since then. We're right around 44 or so percent currently right now with occupancy. So we're very excited about that. Numbers are trickling up. So a lot of support in that space. And as we start this semester, my next report will include all these robust services that we offer in the community that we establish over at River Trail Village. Thank you.
Dr. G, I have a quick question about the Rising Scholar Program. With students impacted by the justice system, how does that define? Is it people who are incarcerated? Is it people who have?
Maybe on probation or working through the system.
Would it also include students who might have a parent who's incarcerated or?
It's really focused on those who specifically have been impacted, so are, are coming back into, from the system into, into school. So very specific direct service to, to that group of students. For formerly incarcerated, if there's a family member, of course, programs like EOPS and other services are available to them as well. So we're very excited about this and it's a statewide initiative and we're, I'm happy to be able to make this impact here at NBC.
I had a question on Trio. Is that, I'm sure there's already been discussion about trying to continue the program internally, maybe with the one-time funds. I don't know if that's something that we can look at.
Yeah, that's a great question, Trustee Iverson. Where our goal is to really think about how our other programs and our other efforts that we're doing can really support this group of students. We're doing it in multiple ways. So you know, really brainstorming with our programs like, like EOPS, DSPS, MESSS STEM or C program to continue to offer a version of it or some, some sort of support. The goal is really to connect these students, to make sure they don't fall through those cracks. That to me is the number one priority. To create a new program or develop that and establish that. I mean, that's, I think those are, that, that's something we definitely would are entertaining, would love to do. But at this moment in time, just making sure they're connected and, and connected to specific programs is critical and important. So that is the goal.
Roughly, how many students does it impact?
Yeah, great question. It's about 134 or 5% right in there. Yeah.
I think to Dr. G's point, there are students that have multiple intersecting eligibilities for different programs. And so we strongly suspect that the majority, if not all of the students can be served through some of the other programs where there's a little bit of overlap in terms of the program objectives also. Also, there's been some talk around potentially aligning efforts throughout the county. Pretty exciting, really conversation and maybe something that's a fortunate offshoot of a very unfortunate loss of funding is potentially connecting with some of our county nonprofits who are doing work in support of the same student populations. And then pulling together to provide a, a version or a modified version of what we've been able to provide for this particular program. So we're not giving up on these students, making sure that, you know, we are meeting their needs and then finding ways to leverage partnerships throughout the county to provide continued services for these students. So.
And one, one final comment, prior to, to us receiving this information about, I think about half the students were already connected to another programs. So that, that there, again, and like Dr. Powell mentions, there, there's an intersection amongst programs. But since then, we've really specifically made some targeted efforts to connect them even more intentionally. So that, that continues. And, and the work of the community organizing now to really support the students on a broader level is, is critical and important. And yeah, I think we're, there's a lot more to come in that space, but we're excited to continue to support this group of students in a different way.
Thank you, Dr. G.
Thank you, Dr. Guerrero. Onto the monthly report from Administrator Services. We covered the budget, I think fairly extensively already. Just a federal funding outlook and I'll just add the state outlook there. We just mentioned Triple S Trio. There's still some questions about other programs on campus, excuse me, across the country that may or may not be available, looking into the future. I, I'll share with you this week, we pulled together several folks to look at both the federal funding programs and our state categoricals to begin the conversations about exactly what Dr. Powell and Dr. Rur, Rur were referencing, how we braid those services to, to meet the student outcomes that, that those programs serve. So that's underway. Not great news that these programs are being reduced and some may be eliminated. But I think as we've discussed, we need to be out in front of this so, so that we have a plan to address the needs of students moving forward. Moving on to the Wine Education Center, I, I think it was already mentioned, Phase Two is underway. I think the, we have a dedication coming up in early, in early September. I think that's an exciting time. And a beautiful building, as Dr. Moore referenced, but they'll also be able to see the progress in place for Phase Two. So we're moving along there. I, I would be remiss if I didn't indicate the value and, and the contributions of NBC staff in this, in this matter. Samantha Maddox has been an unsung hero here and I, I, I see the work she does quietly behind the scenes to make this all go with Kitchell, but I'll share with you, this would not have happened without Samantha Maddox. And Dwayne Almeda to, to a great extent as well. So they, they will have some opportunity for flowers for them internally. But I, but they deserve lots of, lots of credit for making this happen. Our facilities area, I just, I want to bring to your attention the campus solar solution. I've been in contact with Forefront Energy who advised me that Pacific Gas and Electric provided new guidance to, to projects indicating that a site can only have one exporter of electricity on their site. We have a fuel cell, which is considered an exporter. In light of that, I asked Forefront Energy to go back and determine if there was a financial advantage to designating the solar solution as the exporter and seeing if there is a financial advantage there. And, and there is not. So in light of that, I will be recommending to the Board of Trustees that we withdraw the contract with Forefront Energy for the on-campus solar solution. They would continue with the housing solution. Based on the fact that we would not yield any, it would, the costs, we would be the district would be incurring costs associated with installing that solar array as opposed to realizing any savings. So that will be a recommendation I will put forward at the September meeting. The Ash Landfill is continuing, probably will define my career here. It, it is, the county has responded with their comments and our team with Langen is responding to that. I shared with you that we have, we have budgeted about a million dollars, just short of a million dollars across three years. Try to address any mitigation that's required. What we're hearing now, I may have shared with you in the past, is they're likely looking for two feet of soil over, over those locations fenced in and with some, some growth, natural growth over the top. So that's, that's still in progress. I would, I would also add, just learning today, you may hear about it, and I'll just give you a heads up. We had a small, a small fire at the Upper Valley Campus, St. Helena in the evidence room for St. Helena Police Department. It was not really a fire, it was more smoke coming out of a, a junction box and a, and a light fixture. The, the fire department was called. It was mitigated fairly quickly. And our team is, I was going in there to see what we need to do to fix a, fix a leak and take care of, take care of that issue. But you may hear about that. I want to assure you that we addressed it fairly quickly. The fire department responded quickly. It was more smoke than fire, but you may hear about that. So just as an advisory to you. And I would conclude my report and certainly entertain any questions.
All right. Good afternoon, or I'm sorry, good evening. In the Department of Human Resources, and actually that is a retitling of our department, we had our retreat. And I have tasked my team to look at everything that we do. I've been meeting with each individual HR member individually to go over every process that we perform for, on behalf of the college. And this is TME for an equity audit of all HR processes and procedures. The name change is really reflecting everything. It's, I'm not just over training and development. I'm also over Title IX of Civil Rights, Benefits, Compensation, Classification, Labor Relations, Employee Relations, Recruitment. And so we, you'll begin to see that as a title for my area. Additionally, I'm going to drop to the next page. Take care, Armando. I want to thank Dr. Dr. Guerrero, Dr. Powell, and our Title IX Civil Rights Manager, Kelly Tomlinson. We have had the extreme opportunity to provide training on Title IX of Civil Rights and for our athletes hazing and Title IX of Civil Rights. I have to tell you that our student athletes are really impressive. That is one impressive group and I cannot wait to reengage. I just ask everyone, take a look at that schedule and join them and supporting them and going to their games. Because I don't think we appreciate the fact that not only do they have to keep up their GPAs, but they also have to take care of their physical to be able to compete and represent Napa Valley College across the state. And so I just want to put that plug in. Jerry Dunlap is doing a fantastic job with his colleagues over, with the coaches and our student athletes. Fantastic. Very impressive. I also want to point out that the California Alliance for Student Parent Success Community Practice. This was an opportunity that was presented and open to all organizations of higher education throughout the state. We submitted our application and they chose two community colleges to participate. And we are one of them. This will allow us to work with our peer groups to improve our data collection on student parents' implements to parent-friendly policies. When I met with the facilitators in preparing for our first meeting in September, they commented they were really impressed with our passion and our dedication towards this work. So I'm looking forward to representing along with our Napa team as we're engaging in dialogue with our peer groups across the state and to providing more resources for our student parents. We held our new employee orientation this past Tuesday. We had 28 new hires. If I haven't done so already, I just want to take the opportunity to welcome all new members, Armando, to Napa Valley College and thank you for choosing us as your place of employment. And with that, that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Charo. I apologize for trying to skip over all of you, Vips. Now, moving on to reports. I'm going to go down to, I don't think we have anything for the Teaching Awards, Student Affairs Awards. DOS, Trustee Iverson, next month. VWT, Trustee Rios.
Next month.
And NBC Foundation Board Trustee Dodd. All right. Future agenda items. Are there any requests for future agenda items? Okay, let's move on to Trustee and Board Chair Reports. Student Trustee Dizon.
I'm excited to have something substantial and unique to report today. To open, one of the things I have admittedly painfully learned when listening to my peers at the Student Trustee Conference this past weekend is the value in being able to keep reports substantial, but more importantly concise. And so in that spirit of implementing what I learned, I hope to not take any more time with my report than necessary. I have three main things I'd like to provide a report on. The first is on Mesa's STEM Summer Bridge Program. The program was very successful and everyone involved, seemingly at least, had a great time. It was amazing to meet incoming students who are excited to connect with their peers, the professors and the clubs on campus. Seeing them develop their passions, even in that short period of time, is always reinvigorating as a student myself and also inspiring through witnessing the power of community, something I hope to continue building on during my term. Even if it has already been expressed, I wanted to again extend deep gratitude towards the professors who took the time out of their schedules to be with us. And of course, to Renee Rubio, Patricia Passato, Vanessa Corona, and the rest of the Mesa team for putting on a fantastic program. The second notable event is our ASNBC Fall Retreat held earlier this week. It was our first opportunity as the Student Government Board to fully gather together. And I can confidently say that we are all ready to make an impact this coming year. And we have a lot of ambitions and hopefully you'll be able to hear from or about us at another one of these meetings very soon. Again, extending thanks to Omar Pena and Sheila Martin for putting on a great informative retreat for us. And also to Robin D'Arcangelo for spending so much time with us, all of them pushing and encouraging us towards powerful leadership. Lastly, and maybe what you've all been waiting for from me is of course, the Student Trustee Conference held in Ontario, California this past weekend. Before I begin, I wanted to express my gratitude for having the opportunity to attend it on behalf of our district and our campus. It was in being amongst my peers there that I feel I first truly and fully felt the weight and responsibility of this position. And I aspire to fulfill my responsibilities with grace and humility, along with passion and confidence. Over the three days of logistical and developmental workshops, as well as extensive networking with my peers, I've come to understand what it means to be able to have a seat on this board. Or as our keynote speaker put it, at this table. One poignant phrase that sticks out to me that he mentioned was that if you don't have a seat at the table, that means that you're on the menu. And I feel that this phrase encapsulates just what it means to have and be a student trustee on the board and to be the representative of the largest constituent group that we are called to serve. I learned how deeply powerful it is to have an advisory vote. And I want to make effective use for it in my advocacy for the student body. I aspire to build an advocacy platform for the student body and to be able to empower the student voice, whether it is at the level of our board or even beyond at the state and federal levels. So that I can ensure those who don't feel they have a seat at the table can make their way to it. I would like to continue nurturing the spirit of collegiality with you all. As one of the most important things emphasized this weekend has been to make use of the opportunity to have you all as my mentors and to learn from you all. So I hope you all can find the time to indulge me over this year. To empower the next generation of changemakers is a powerful phrase that I have adopted when listening to a guest president speaker during the weekend. And it, again, I feel encapsulates our purpose as a board and I plan on doing so. And it, again, I feel encapsulates our purpose as a board, and I plan on doing so. In short, I learned a lot, and that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Student Trustee Dezon. That was a wonderful report, and I'm so happy to have you on board, and I hope you have a great first week of school. Trustee Kishna.
I have nothing to report, except that I went to the last Meet Me in the Street event in American Canyon of the summer and saw Napa College there. It was great to see Dr. Tennyson. I'm a big fan of Dr. Tennyson. Appreciate her, and I want to encourage everybody next year, second Wednesday, I forget if it's the second Wednesday or third Wednesday of every month during the summer. But it's like multiple blocks of booths and kiosks and so much fun and a big section of kid-owned businesses at the beginning really supports our community. So, come on. I'll remind you again.
Did you say booths or booze?
Boos, kiosks, all kinds of stuff.
Thank you. Oh, nice. Awesome.
I just want to note that there's a fire right now in CalStoga, and I'm just sending positive thoughts and prayers. On my way here, about between three and four, there was, or I saw about eight to ten fire trucks on their way up north. So, I'm hoping everybody will stay safe, but I keep getting updates in it. Very, so, that's all I have to report.
Trustee Baker?
I'm just going to say that, that if you're not, if you don't have a seat at the table, you're probably on the menu, it gets followed up. If you don't have a seat at the table, bring your own chair. So, just, nothing really to report, but just want to wish everyone a great new semester starting Monday. Very sorry to miss out on the Flex Events. I usually like to try to come to those, but I've just been stacked with meetings today and tomorrow. So, be there in spirit.
Trustee Dodd?
Nothing to report.
Trustee Iverson? Trustee Rios?
All right, just a quick note. We had our family's foundation, the Damian Multinato Foundation Scholarship Fund you know, this past, really the first weekend in this month. And we had about twenty-some scholarship recipients from up and down the valley, receiving five hundred to fifteen hundred dollars. Most of them were coming here this fall. So, that was, that was exciting to see, and some very, very accomplished young people. There were some going off to some very prestigious colleges too, and so that was nice to see too, but the majority are coming here. So, that was great. I mean, but I mean, I said bigger, you know, they're bigger than our little campus, but this is, but they know the value. A lot of them know the value now or are starting to understand, which in the past, because I, I hear this all the time. I think you all know my wife's a teacher at St. Helena High School. And there's a lot of pressure on these kids from their parents and other people, regardless of what their financial condition is, to go to a four-year college. And that still remains now, but it seems like a lot of them are starting to understand that. And taking the opportunity to come here before moving on. Most of them had plans, you know, they, they gave a little presentation and talked about the plans to, you know, which school they're hoping to transfer to from here. So, it was wonderful to see.
That's great. Thank you, Trustee Rios. I have no report tonight. So, our next meeting, regular meeting, will be on September eleventh. And with that, meeting is adjourned at seven twelve.